Good morning, and I call the November 19th, 2019 work session of the Marion County School Board to order at 11:30 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the School Board attorney to explain the rules of the board meeting.
Good morning, this work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida sunshine law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the sunshine law, the Board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the School Board Secretary. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the sunshine law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these rules.
Before we have our Superintendent come on, I ask Ms. Stacy to give us our Board Commitment Statement.
We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we chose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered, because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations and get better. We do not accept excuses, we will not accept mediocrity, we will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing.
Thank you very much, and happy Thursday. First point we need to clarify, Elena said there might be a conflict with a work session, so she wants to take care of that.
We are scheduled for a work session January 23rd, 2020. Since we do have day in the legislator now, from the 22nd to the 24th, we will need to change that. So, Mr. Cummings, I will give you the 2020 schedule, and you can decide what day you would like that changed to, to another work session date.
And we're going to be in Tallahassee on...
The 23rd.
23rd. On the calendar.
I'm unavailable on the 16th. I'm speaking at a conference out of town.
Can we go back one week? Do we need to go forward?
You can, you can choose to add the topics to the January 9th if you like, or you can choose another date after you return.
You guys mind if we put it on the 9th?
As of right now, we only have one topic, possibly just two.
Right.
That sounds good.
Let's add it to the 9th. Add it to the 9th, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good. Okay. Do you need a consensus vote thing?
Consensus to move it?
We have a consensus.
Yes.
We have a consensus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yesterday, I was meeting with some folks in my conference room, and Jackie came into the conference room and handed me a business card, and she said, "This guy is here." And I looked at the card, and it was Damian Kelly from the Department of Education. He is the Chief Security Officer, and he's in town for a security conference at the Hilton. And so, he popped in to say hi, and so, we spent some time together, and he shared something very interesting that the department has hired, and there's a particular name for them, but I can't think of the name right now, but it's folks that will be working with him that'll be regional, that will be doing like spot checks on schools, and they'll be starting soon. And I think that's a great thing, because as much as we do, you know, we're always looking at it from our perspective, and so, it'll be nice to have spot checks from folks looking at it from a different perspective, so I welcome that. So, we had, we had a great chat, and he's at his conference now representing the Commissioner. That, and Mr. Ayers has some information for you. At the last work session, you asked him to come back with information so you all could make a decision on Evergreen, and if you wanted to move those kids, some of those kids over to College Park, and your recommendation was as soon as possible, so I think he met that. And he needed to come back today too, because he's going to go over a timeline, and Ms. Kiner is going to pop in and share some information too, that if you all decide to move forward with this, there's a timeline that we have to adhere to, so he'll fill you in.
Good morning.
Morning.
Pastor Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez, Mr. Gibbs. So, good morning. So, I'm here today to talk about some instructions that y'all had given me at the last work session about the students that are, zone for Evergreen that are west of I-75. You should have in your packet of this PowerPoint, in this picture, the first slide that I want to show you again, just to refresh everybody, so we're all on the same page. Right now, we're showing, what you see here is the Evergreen Elementary Zone and the College Park School Zone. The red dots that you see represent addresses with children. It does not represent one child. It could, but it could represent an apartment complex with multiple children. So, every dot is an address with children, for school-aged children. The red dots show that actual students are actually attending Evergreen currently. And the area that we're talking about today is this upside, sideways L that is west I-75. And again, we're looking at, the dots show addresses with children. Again, could be multiple children, could be one child. Currently, right now, in that area, there are 161 students that attend Marion County Public Schools from that area. Of those 161, 112 currently attend Evergreen. When we're looking at moving or changing the district lines, we have to district as zoned, because currently, other people are attending, are zoned for Evergreen, but are not attending Evergreen. Currently, 20 of those students are on controlled open enrollment, so they're choosing to go somewhere else. If we change the school zone, and they can get a bus to a different school, they may come back to the school, so when we account for numbers, we have to count for as zoned, not just attending. So, that's what this screen shows. This shows you where all those students are and where they're attending currently. By the numbers, currently, when we break out, just we're looking at Evergreen and College Park. Evergreen, capacity is 728 students. As zoned, there's 559 students. Currently attending is 375, so it's showing 169 empty seats. College Park, 784. Currently zoned, 742. Currently attending, 695, to show an empty seats of 42 as zoned. And again, I need to look at as zoned when we're looking at capacity for potential. A proposed boundary change that we're looking at, again, the map that we see is this with the hash marks on it, which is the Evergreen Zone west of I-75. And again, we already talked about 161 as-zoned students would be affected, and 112 currently attending as affected.
Show us where College Park is compared to those little red dots.
College Park is the star.
That's it, okay.
And Evergreen is the star.
Okay.
So...
Twice as far.
After the boundary shift, we're looking at the Evergreen, 728, again, the capacity is the same. Zoned for Evergreen after the boundary shift is 398 students. Currently as attending after the boundary shift, it would be 263, so we would end up with 330.
Ms. Ayers, go back to the slide before that, please.
Yes.
I'm seeing on here that College Park, am I wrong, is over in this quadrant, right over here?
Right over here. Here's College Park Elementary.
Then what's CPE over here?
This, this CPE is just telling you, that's a label for this zone.
That's their zone.
Okay.
Oh, like Evergreen, that's the label. It's just where the label...
So, the star is where the...
The star is where the school is actually located.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am. All right. When I look at Evergreen Elementary School, we did some work in Evergreen Elementary, or, sorry, College Park Elementary School can support the five portables. The infrastructure's in place, cafeteria's the size, the parking's the size, the electrical can hold it, and the sewer can hold it. There are currently no, not the portables that are there, so we would need to move the portables. This map, if you're familiar with Evergreen, or College Park, the yellow squares are where the portables would go. Short and narrow one is a restroom portable, because we have to cross a road, and so, we would need to have a restroom for those students to go to. The next page is the cost. I've worked with facilities, networking, safety, and security to find out what the cost of moving those five portables to be there. It would be $16,780 per portable, and I have it broken down, what that cost entails. And then, the leased restroom is $14,600 with a $8100 yearly lease, because it's a leased portable. So, the total cost to move and set up the five portables is $98,500 with an $8100 yearly reoccurring cost for the five portables and the restroom. There's also a cost with teaching units and instructional materials, and I've got Ms. Kiner here, this is her zone that the kids are moving from, and they can speak to what those impacts are.
Right. So, as I spoke in a previous session where we were talking about Dr. NH Jones and Pointe Sienna Heights population, this is similar in that same idea, where we certainly want to have a timeline and a plan, and a well-laid-out plan for students going into another school. We're talking about three times as many students, really, from what we were talking about at Dr. NH Jones. And so, you know, we know what the cost of a teacher is. We would be talking about eight to 10 classroom teachers for that amount of students going to College Park. And really, because you would be downsizing at one school, you would not necessarily take the same exact teachers, of course, because contractually, what would happen is if we do this, then College Park staffing plan would, of course, increase in different grade levels for their amount of units. So, the principal at College Park would certainly post those positions, and she would hire those positions at that school. Teachers across the district, when it's the transfer period time, which is usually the beginning of May, would have the opportunity to transfer into those open positions if they wanted to. And certainly, Evergreen staffing plan would decrease in unit size based on the amount of numbers that we're showing here for students that are in that College Park Zone. So, some of those teachers may be ones that would interview, but they may not be. It may be other teachers, it may be first-year teachers. So, the cost of that looks different, only because some of the teachers would be existing teachers that we would have here in Marion County, maybe from Evergreen, but maybe from other schools. And then, some may be new units that would be added, and of course, that would, could be an additional cost to that school. The curriculum resources and all the instructional materials would then be shifted, as we would always do, from a school that is losing units. They would be packaged up and boxed up and labeled, and they would be shipped over to the new site, College Park, so that those teachers would have those materials in plenty of time. And we would work with, I would work with Ben Whitehouse, who oversees College Park in his area, and certainly with Jennifer Beck for Elementary Ed for the curriculum resources, and making sure that those are in, in place in ample time for teachers to be able to access those materials.
Okay, I got a question. You haven't factored in transportation, where we will be busing half as far, so there has to be a transportation savings also to offset this.
Absolutely. I think so.
Well, a lot of the transportation would determine on what the Board direction, I mean, initially, overall, yes, there would be a transportation savings, but then, you know, what do we do with the existing students? You know, because when you rezone students, there's always the question of, do the students that are currently attending get to stay if they want? Are they grandfathered in? And then, do we provide the transportation? So, that's a Board decision to make of how we handle that. So, but, yes, you are correct, Ms. Stacy.
Well, this has been something, everyone has wondered, what is the problem at Evergreen for so many years? Possibly the lack of parent involvement with the students being so far away could be one of the issues that has affected the success, or lack of success, in students for many, many years there, because the parents could not be involved, they couldn't get to the schools. And so, we may be kind of taking care of a problem. Everybody's, this is the only thing we haven't tried. We've tried everything else. Let's get them closer to home, and see if they're not on the bus as many hours every day, you know, and parents can get there, and they're closer to home, and just the whole feeling like that. So, I'm really surprised the cost isn't more for the portables. I'm impressed that it's that, and I think when we put some transportation savings in there, you know, we're going to see a little bit there. But, but my children went to Madison Street their entire elementary experience, and half of the old Madison Street was in portables, and it was one of the most desired schools to go to, to go sit in those portables. I think it was like fourth and fifth grade, or third, fourth, and fifth, were all in portables. And parents, there was a, at that time, they didn't have enough openings for everybody to get into, so there's a lot of people that live in mobile homes in this community, they have wonderful, wonderful homes. I remember years ago in Melbourne, when a hurricane came through, and I was friends with some people over in Brevard, they had this great big new, this great big new school. The entire roof of their new school blew off, and the portables were all untouched. But, the brand-new school, the roof was off of it, and it happened, you know, overnight, so everybody was okay, and the portables were sitting there completely safe, so.
Thank you. Good morning.
I'm impressed you got a bathroom portable.
Yeah, well, when we look at...
When we added that to Wyamina, that made all the difference, to have that accessible.
The issue is where the portables are going to be located, you're going to have to cross the street, and that's an issue...
Why do you cross a street?
Well, it's, it's not, it's an access road back to a parking lot, deliveries getting done, the cafeteria and everything. So, there are, there are things that are going to have to be worked out with gates and things like that for children's safety, but we're going to have to put a portable there, a restroom there, to keep them having to cross that access road every time to use the restroom.
We can paint a little walkway, too.
Yeah, there's lots of issues that we've...
Actually, we had an access road at Madison Street, too. I remember that well.
Right. All right. On to...
I have a question. We have a couple of questions. On your reverse L slide, slide number two, with the cluster of the red dots, are any of those addresses within the two-mile walk zone or not?
Well, the issue, and Ms. Rohr is not here to answer that, the issue is within the walk zone here, there's a four-lane road.
Right.
And so, they're not going to be able to cross that.
I would say...
So, they're going to have to get a bus.
Okay.
So, there are, none of the students that were here are in a walk area.
Okay. I just wanted confirmation of that. And then, you were mentioning the number of teachers, and I think of five portables, five classroom teachers, if it's an ESE classroom, possibly a teacher and a para. And then, but with the added number of students, are you thinking about specials teachers as well that might have to be hired?
Yes, yes, ma'am. One of the things that you would certainly want to consider is the Board, Ben Whitehouse and I have already been speaking of this with Dr. Grantham and Dr. Mayor, is that you, looking at increasing the size of the school, first of all, but also drilling down and looking at the students academically, attendance, behavior, you would want to increase, possibly having them have a second guidance counselor, a second dean, maybe even another reading coach on the campus. Those are some additional staff members that could be an additional cost to the district. Some of them would be, could be ones that are at Evergreen. Right now, at Evergreen, there's one counselor. I would certainly recommend that there possibly be two at College Park with their size. There are two deans...
You're making that anyway, probably.
Right. You could, you could, they've had it in the past.
And you need to look at music, art, and PE. We cannot...
Right, and you'd have to look at all the special...
Go that, we may have to have Rovers or something like that.
And keeping in mind that the students that you're sending over there, it's not, that's why we say eight to 10 units, because it's not, just like when we're looking at Dr. NH Jones, 18 4th graders, 18 3rd graders, it's a mixture of grade levels. So, you could be looking at some split classrooms, depending on the amount of students in each one.
And I understand, our concept here is to give you all the information. We don't, with transparency, we want to let you know what the thing is. This is not, oh, we shouldn't do this. This is, we want you to have all the information.
And I appreciate you, because the cost of failure has been astronomical.
Right, right, right.
All right, so, going on, and we'll have plenty of time for questions at the end, next steps. And that's why I'm here today. That's why I wanted to come in Dr. Mayor's briefing here, is given the Board consensus, we have to follow things, there's legally things that we have to do for publication and rulemaking, because this will be a zoning boundary change. So, we have to have, the tentative schedule that I have here is on the January 9th work session, I'm already, I already had a schedule thing on the January 9th work session, so for a zoning boundary change in anticipation of things happening. So, I can already do a, an advertisement, so that we can do a formal work session to talk about this, because we have to introduce it as a formal work session. Then, we have committee meetings. Then, we tie up the meetings with the parents, send out the letter, so we get the community input as to what we're doing here. My suggestion would be maybe in the College Park cafeteria, you know, things like that, so we go to them, and that way...
Well, I think with these parents, we need to find a place...
Yeah, we looked at...
College Park would be the closest.
College Park would be the closest, that's the school they would go to. I looked, I drove the neighborhood, I drove the area to look. There's not a facility, per se, that's there. There's a couple of churches, maybe, that we could inquire if we wanted to have a place that's even closer that we could look into, but sometimes, it's better to come see where are you going to be going, so they can see it, so they know it and more information. We would do a letter to parents. Then, we would schedule a public hearing at the February 11th Board Session. Then, we would hold the public hearing and the actual vote on February 25th. And so, then, at that February 25th, that's when the Board would formally say, "This is done. We're doing this," and then, we have implementation. That's why I wanted to do it, because there's a lot of implementation that needs to be done, you know, with rezoning, the actual maps, getting the teachers in place, and stuff like that. So, that's what I've come to the Board today.
Do we, do we know yet the actual distribution of students among the grade levels in that L area? Like, is it predominantly younger grades?
It's spread out, it's spread out. We looked at the number of 5th graders that would pull out, and historically, the number of kindergarteners have been the same. So, that's how we were able to, we have to project kindergarten, because I don't know exactly how many kindergarteners are going to come, but they are pretty much spread out.
Okay. Evenly distributed, then?
Evenly distributed.
Okay. Because that makes a difference, too, in terms of what parents might want their child to do if they're already in fourth or fifth grade.
So, you as the Board have this packet, this information, most of this information will not change, so when we schedule the work session in January, you'll have the time to think about that, and we'll go from there.
Great job, thanks for...
Yes, thank you.
That was quick, you pulled it together very quickly.
Any other questions?
Thank you, you did a good job, Ms. Ayers.
Appreciate it.
We're going to, we're going to get this done.
All right, thank you.
Again, not going to keep any kid down the road anymore.
One last thing to bring up, now that we have a new Chair. Ms. Rohr has mentioned that we want a group to do the 1920 instructional calendar. We have a date set for that, Wednesday, December 11th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And so, Pastor Chair, I would like to request a Board member to be present on that, and I'm not sure how the exact, I know Ms. Rohr has expressed great interest in that in the past, wanting to do that. We have union representation.
Ms. Rohr is it?
Sure?
That's easy.
All right. All right, Ms. Rohr, so it's Wednesday, December 11th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m.
We'll get a calendar.
I'll send you a calendar invite, they'll have the location and everything.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Awesome.
All right, and then, last point, as we move on to the policy, is the email that I sent yesterday will be included as my written statement as part of the record and my stand on the policy, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Our proposed amended purchasing bidding policy, 7.70.
And you should have three documents. You should have a clean version, which is the current policy, not marked up at all. Then, you'll have two redlined version, one with amended on the top there. That is the one that I, when I met with Finance and Purchasing this morning, we sat down, went through it, and all their questions and issues, and we revised it together, and that is the cleanest, or the most recent version from this morning. So, it's the one marked amended. That is the one I would recommend the Board look at.
And what were the changes from this morning, from yesterday, Paul? From the one that you sent out?
There were, we, we pretty much went through it line by line. Any issues they had, we tried to address, we tried to clean up some of the first paragraph. So, if you want to just go page by page, we can go through it side by side there.
I would like Ms. Boston Ellis to give us her information on her...
Yeah, I'd like to hear from her and Mr. Collins as we're, as we're moving through this. Just to be sure that what we're doing is, is not going to absolutely tie their hands where they can't get anything done.
Right.
Good morning.
I brought Ms. Passata as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you want to ask us questions, or...
Are there concerns about this?
You have any concerns?
What are, what do you see as concerns?
Well, one of the major concerns we had, and, and you'll see, they were amended in the first two, three sentences, is to make sure that we don't tie the hands of our schools' departments as well as Rick, because the, the way it was originally written, it would be almost like the Chair would have to be sitting next to Rick approving every transaction. So, we were able to get language to narrow in the scope of what would be approved by the Chair as well as the Superintendent. Those were our issues in the first two, three sentences.
That is taken care of now? You feel comfortable with...
Mr. Collins, you feel comfortable with the way it's...
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's not our intent to tie anybody's hands.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
We want things to continue to flow quickly and effectively.
Alice, did you want to say anything on that?
We just wanted to make sure that we did...
Alice.
If you had...
We just want to make sure that if the Board wanted it clear what type of transactions you wanted to approve, did you want to approve everything from zero to $35,000 for the Board Chair to sign off on it? So, that was just the way it was worded, it was not really clear, because we did not feel like that's what you wanted. We felt like you wanted to approve contractual service contracts, not individual purchases, and we wanted to be able to move forward with using purchase orders like we have in the past.
Okay. Some things can be done through a purchase order, not a contract, that would have normally been a contract, to get around a contract, and so, um...
And I think we want a clear direction from you as to how you wanted that worded, you know, because we don't want to sidestep you, but we just want to make sure it's worded so that we understand.
I would like our attorney to help us on this. So, it's...
The language is where we were kind of, the Board directive was for contracts. I mean, there was no definition of what the Board was considering a contract, and when we were meeting, Mr. Collins was saying, "Well, POs are technically contracts as well, because they carry terms and conditions." So, I mean, I, I don't know how to pare it down, any other than saying contracts, and, you know, we ended up with contracted services, excluding day-to-day operational purchase orders. So, if Mr. Collins needs to get something out to a school and make a PO, because the school's down for whatever reason, he still has that leniency to say, "Hey, we got to issue this PO, so technical services..."
We have to be, we have to be able to allow them to do that. We can't tie the hands of the day-to-day operation of our school system. And if, if that's what we're insisting, I, I just don't think that's the wise way to go. If it's contractual services, I can go for that, but I don't want to tie their hands by also saying purchase orders. I mean, every school uses purchase orders.
Okay, but also, you're our purchasing director.
Agent.
Agent.
Yes.
Um, you know what I'm talking about. Things that would normally require a contract, continue doing it as a contract, and having it approved, and when it's, you know, at the point that it needs to be approved, and things that, because I believe that there comes a time where we have to let you be in charge of our purchasing, our purchasing agent, and you know our concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what this Board member feels you should be held accountable for. If there's something that you really feel should have a contract, then possibly get in touch with our attorney or what, however y'all have your working...
That's what, that's our process now.
However you have your working condition, and work it out. However you have your working condition, and work it out. And then I'm very comfortable with our attorney's guidance. He's done a great job for us so far. And your guidance, you've done a great job. I think that sometimes we have to start preparing for a new way of working here. When we're working under the appointed superintendent, there'll be a lot more of that type of camaraderie as far as working as everyone's employees of the school board. And so you'll have a different, kind of a different relationship probably with our school board attorney and everything will be a lot different. So we might as well start practicing and kind of getting into the move so that when we do move to that next year, everybody will kind of be on board. It'll be a nice, easy flow into.
We have a great relationship with Mr. Gibbs already. We deal with him weekly, sometimes daily.
And if you're not, if you're not, if, if there's a purchase order that you're like, geez, this should really have a contract.
I stop it in.
Put it in your hands to contact Mr. Gibbs and work it out.
That's what, that's what we do now. Yes, ma'am.
So this, the, the language does takes out purchase orders in the day-to-day operational. So.
So you're comfortable?
You guys are good with that language?
Ms. Boston Ellis? It's going to put a little bit more responsibility on you to make some calls.
But he does now. Whenever he's concerned, he's emailing me and, and together we agree this is something Mr. Gibbs needs to talk about. He talks to Alice. So we do communicate all the time and.
That's great. Because we've not really ever had this conversation before.
Right. And I think a lot of the issues just stem from you not knowing what our processes are and the safeguards that we do have in effect right now in terms of protecting the district. There are some things that are new to us and we're, as a district, struggling with. And that has to do with the new process of vendor apps. And we were able to talk through some issues this morning with Mr. Gibbs. So we may be coming back to you with amendments because we really are trying to work with schools. And we've, we're asking them to do additional work with vendor applications and making sure the, the vendor has the credentials that are required by law as Mr. Gibbs has interpreted them. So this is very new to our schools and they're the ones that are struggling with this more so than us. But we've tried to provide support to them, but this is going to be a work in process. And we may come back to you with requests to amend some of these items that we are basically agreeing to today.
Well, Mr. Mr. Gibbs, his job is to protect this school board and this school system from outside attacks. And my confidence is that as our school board attorney, if this is the way he wants it, this is the way it shall be, in my opinion. If he's, if that's what he says, we have to do to keep us legally where we need to be. And I welcome the conversation back and forth and everything, but sometimes just because we've been doing something a long, long time, doesn't mean we ever did it right. We just kind, it kind of became a way of life. But now that we have Mr. Gibbs here going through this and, and everything, I feel that there just might be some change for staff to deal with. Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Boston Ellis, could you be a little more specific on the difficulty of the vendor applications with this new process? What are they having difficulty with?
Well, basically filling out the form and having to go and verify that it's a corporation, verifying that they have a license in the city of, of Ocala. If, if you guys want to add in anything. So we were talking about our first line people being secretaries and not being aware of, you know, their purposes to get the transaction through. So it's a, a hard learning process for them in terms of what the requirements are now. And, and Alice and also Christine offer support to the schools, but we just want to make sure that we're giving them the correct message. So it was, it's important for us to understand the why. Why are we doing this? Where is it in statute? And what does this actually solve? So like, like.
I think those are very dialed questions.
Except that I do believe people need to be properly licensed and, and everything because sometimes when you're doing the bid process and you have two competing bidders, one has all his ducks in a row and this company over here is flying by the seat of his pants. He's not properly licensed. He doesn't have his, anything in order. And he's going to maybe be a little bit less in the bid, but possibly not as prompt and accountable with what he's doing. Frankly, I don't see a problem with making sure people are licensed properly.
Don't we have an approved vendors list that has all of that anyway?
We are trying to, to create that. But a lot of the things that the problems that the schools are having is they have historically dealt with small businesses locally. And those vendors are not licensed by Division of Corporations as, are not registered by the Division of Corporations. They may be sole proprietors. They may not have fictitious names. And now we're asking them, in order to continue doing services for us, you must go through these hoops to be what we, what Mr. Gibbs considers a licensed vendor or at least be registered with the Division of Corporations. So our vendors are having a lot of issues with that because they just want to help out our school. They want to continue doing the same.
What kind of stuff do they sell? Give me a, like, don't, not a name, but like what kind of things?
Christine, help me out. I'm drawing a blank.
It'd be something like a caterer or something.
Christine, can you give us an example of what's going on? Are, are they licensed in the city of Ocala and in Marion County?
So I'm dealing it from, with it from a perspective on the internal account side, right? Because this has also been applied to the internal account side as well, which has been, I think, also a drastic difference. But you're referring to everything from just simple fundraising, getting a fundraising company approved, buying cheer uniforms, getting, I mean, it's everything from buying food and having a meal catered for the teachers or having pizza brought in for the students to, so when I say everything, I'm referring to this is, this is keeping them from field trips. This has kept teachers from conferences.
And we don't want.
That's not, that's not the ten.
That is not. That's what's occurring on the internal account side because the internal side uses all of those funds to help feed kids on perfect attendance day or have fundraising opportunities occur so that they can raise money to go on conventions and field trips. Those are the things that are not able to.
But I don't want people feeding our kids that's not properly licensed. I mean, buying food from places that aren't properly licensed.
They may be licensed in Marion County, but they may have just chosen because they're so small not to, to be listed with the Florida.
Another example would be, we have a gentleman who works, who comes in, is a scorekeeper at Forest High School and has been the scorekeeper there for 10, 15 years for the basketball games. Well, he's going to be paid over $500 over that season, the basketball season, but we cannot get him approved because he's not registered.
Oh, we can't do that. Can we change that threshold, Mr. Gibbs? So where it's instead of $500, it's?
Yeah, what we talked about this morning was like for those, normally if they would just explain, hey, this isn't a business that offers this service. This is just somebody that's coming to, you know, Forest or whoever.
If we're spending $5,000 and $10,000 with somebody, they need to have some licenses.
No. It wouldn't be near that amount. On the internal side, when you're talking about dollar amounts like that, you're referring to large field trips at like prom, grad bash, graduation. When you're talking big numbers, it's really athletics. And it's referring to uniforms, cheer uniforms and those types of things with prom, grad bash and stuff like that.
I used to order.
When you're referring to scorekeepers, they're never going to earn.
I used to order all those uniforms and those people were properly, they were corporations that we ordered.
Maybe we need to change that threshold to $5,000.
What do you think is a fair threshold? Like what are you seeing like, okay?
We, we discussed originally a thousand dollars was our, was what we had requested.
So is a thousand suitable?
It may be 2,000. I don't want you to get into it.
Yeah, we're not trying to, we're not trying to lock you in. We're trying to give you some leeway.
I think maybe y'all need to go back and look at kind of what you've, some, some more examples so we didn't catch a cold turkey like this and kind of see what your threshold needs to be and, and let us know what it is. And we can amend that.
And, and that's what.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs?
We, we can amend. If you want to keep your current timeline, you guys are going to have to decide whether you want to move forward now or postpone the rulemaking process.
No, we don't want to postpone. We need to move forward. So why don't we, can we amend today at 2,000? And then we can go back and amend after. I mean, if that doesn't work, would that be a suitable amount?
Why don't we say 2,500?
2,500? 2,500?
And then that, then, then our little pizza, you know, then that helps our schools not have to.
Well, it's going to help on the fundraising side too.
Yeah.
Get some of our fundraising. It will help a lot with the fundraising aspect of things because, so yes, I think that that would be, that would be manageable and that would have a huge.
And if you find that it's not, then you can just always come back. But, you know, there's always exceptions to all rules that you have to come back and we can amend what we've got.
We don't want to hinder what our, what our schools need to do. We do not want to hinder that.
Is 2,500 good for you guys?
Just to clarify, so just to clarify, we would require a vendor application to be done for purchases over $2,500 or more on the internal side and as well on the district side as well. I just want to verify.
Mr. Gibbs, does that sound good?
It's your policy if that's where you want to set the threshold. I advise you that they have to be registered by law in Florida if they're doing business in Florida. If you guys want to choose to allow them to not be up to that threshold, that's your decision.
I want to know that they're licensed in Marion County, that they've gone through the licensing process. Some of our little.
It's not in the city of Ocala that they're doing business.
They, they may not be located within, only the city of Ocala has a business licensing right now. The county suspended theirs several years ago. So, yeah, they don't have any business licensing going on. So the only ones they would apply to is those licensed, or those that have, that have a property within the city limits. That's, you know, we talked about that as well. And it's putting a lot on our secretarial staff to determine who is within the boundaries of the city of Ocala because some of them pointed out, they may have an address that says city of Ocala, but they're really in Marion County. So just because it says Ocala doesn't necessarily mean they're in the city limits.
Anybody that's doing business with a large entity like this, they're that big that they've got their foot in this door and they're doing business with us, I think at a certain point need to be properly licensed and for all kinds of reasons.
And we discussed that if they're opening, if they're actually advertising themselves as a business to do for more than one school, then that would be considered a business entity. But like in the case of the scorekeeper, that's just one school.
And that's little stuff.
And, but we have had vendors that don't want to go through this hoop that are no longer willing to do business with us because.
For like several sports of that, they could get up to $2,000 probably if they do more than one sport at the school. So y'all know what we're looking for and, and y'all, if y'all would just keep an eye and, and kind of make some notes, okay, well, they, the board really needs to think about, we need to talk to Mr. Gibbs about this and just kind of.
Are we saying just Ocala? Because the district is bigger than this.
There's no license in Marion County.
There's no Marion County license.
The only, the only one inside the county that I'm aware of that has a business license is the city of Ocala itself.
I don't, I don't think the scorekeeper has to have a business license. He's a, he's, that's a different story. Y'all know what we're looking for.
You have, you have businesses in Dunellen that are doing business with Dunellen High School and the elementary school. They don't have licenses. They may not have a Ocala license.
I mean, I don't know about even referees and stuff like that. I mean, there's a common sense point that you have to function from and y'all fully. Now they're smiling. Now you're smiling? So let's just get all on the common sense page.
Because we're on the front lines, talking to the schools every single day with the bookkeepers and secretaries. So we understand their struggle. We understand the vendors who will no longer work with us any longer because they don't want to go through this process. So having that $2,500 threshold will have an impact tomorrow, today.
Okay, let's do it. Let's amend it for right now. And if it, and Mr. Gibbs, if it looks like it's going to be some kind of issue, keep an eye on it and.
How do we get around that? How do we deal with that license issue?
The registering? If they get caught by the state, they'll, they, they're subject to fines and stuff. I mean, they're, they're, they have limitations under the law as to what they can do if they're not properly registered. So I mean, there's implications.
I think a scorekeeper is probably going to be, I think our auditors will pick some stuff up.
That's what we discussed as much like if they had, if they email us, the problem is the vendor app, we get it. If everything's not there, we say we can't approve it.
Okay.
If they send us a note like on the scorekeeper, I would have said just go to administration and tell them to approve it or not approve it based on that because they're not offering themselves up to business. If they're out there marketing their services to the public, they're supposed to be registered.
Registered to state.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and we talked about adding a couple of items to the vendor application so that they're self-reporting that I have a license or I don't have a license or that I'm not a, I'm employee-owned business. So again, it's just the transitioning from something that is totally different and making sure that we're meeting your requirements, but not putting too much on the students. So we will come back to you with amendments as we hear from the masses.
That'll be helpful.
If that is okay with you.
Absolutely. Process. Absolutely.
This, this document is building because we gotta.
We'll call it living right now.
Living.
And just know that you do have staff that is very watchful and very particular about what comes before you or what needs to come before you as well.
And I see at F, the legal comment is board needs to decide who will be responsible for approving vendor applications?
Yes. And that's whoever you guys want. Right now, we're doing it based on the superintendent's designation. When I first started, that's the superintendent.
And we can't because of conflict of interest. Because we're approving a vendor app and then turning around and paying them. So that's not good. Or, or Rick would be turning around approving a requisition. So it's not good for any of us to be doing that.
So Mr. Gibbs, what's the timeline for you to turn it around? I mean, I don't want to wait four to six weeks to get a vendor application.
It just depends on how many, like when we went to the new form we sent out en masse. So we were getting like 700 in the inbox at a time. So I mean, that does take time. I think this week, we were only a week or so behind. Keshala started this week on 11/12 is where she was up to.
So I would say approved by the school board attorney.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Some of the issues with the time, time length involved are, are vendor-related, meaning they get the form and they don't fill something out properly or with their correct name. Then you have to send it back to them. So there's a back and forth time involved, just like in a, in our bid documents. So we, you know, we try to tell them 15 different ways how to fill it out and they just don't read sometimes and that causes issues.
We get that with contracts too. They get the wrong person to sign or something.
Right.
Well, y'all know the intent. Y'all got to hear the intent. Y'all, all young, nice young people, you'll be here with us for a while. You'll be able to remember it. You will be, you will memorialize this for us.
And while we're on this policy, under the conflict of interest, I would love to just talk a little bit about C and tell you some of the issues that has come up with this.
On which now?
It's on conflict of interest. It says, "No school board employee may directly or indirectly purchase or recommend the purchased goods or services from any business organization in which his or her spouse or children has a material interest as designed by Florida statutes." So that is Florida statute, but we need to think about and have conversations about writing letters of exemption or something. And a perfect example, I'm not going to use names, but I'm going to give you a situation that has happened. We, we have several commercial appraisers, appraisers in town and one that has worked with the school system before and does an outstanding job can no longer work for us because his wife happens to be a teacher. Now, there's something wrong with that picture. We are a small community. This is a reputable business in town and he can no longer work with us because his wife is a teacher. And I can promise you, because we have 7,000 employees, that that is not the only case out there. So what do we need to do? What can we do, Mr. Gibbs, to be sure that we are getting top-notch people that have always worked for us to be able to work for us if their spouse or their child, according to this, works in this district? And chances of that happening are pretty great. So what do we, we need to be able to do something.
The appraisers thing, the easiest avenue is to do like we do contractors and just set them up on a rotational basis. I mean, Mr. Knight's familiar with doing that. He does that with our contractors. There is an exemption in the ethics code for you can use them as long as they're on a rotational. You don't have any discretion. Whoever's next up on your list gets the job, or they get first crack at the job. If they say, hey, I can't do it, you're going to have to move on, that's fine.
Well, I think we should be rotating anyway. I don't think we should always use the same one anyway. I mean...
Well, the appraisers, it, the way, it kind of depends on, because you kind of get a feel for who always gives the high, who always gives the low. So, and, you know, we may want to say, hey, we want to go with that one because we need a low on this one to best suit our need. I mean, that's where you run into the problem with that. If the next up on the list is the high appraiser, you're going to come in on your side and your interest with a high appraisal, and that's what you're going to get stuck with. It's just like if you're on an eminent domain case, and the person that gives the highest appraisers, appraisals historically is next up, you got to go with that one, and you could end up paying $100,000 more than the low appraiser.
Okay, if that's our criteria though, and their, their family member, their wife is an employee here, their wife is not opening the bid, she's not making, she's not having any, any department, there's no... Now, I could see if it was in like, you know, one of the departments that's, that's in charge of drawing the appraisals, but we need, I think we need to fix that. Ms. McCall, I agree with you on this.
Paul, can you look at the relationship?
And I think we need to get around that.
Can you look at the relationship, and then you make a determination based on that relationship, whether or not we grant an exception?
I can't, I can't do anything from a legal side. I can say, hey, this one, I, I disagree with whatever the law says, or my interpretation of it, without going to the Commission on Ethics on every specific one. They're the only one that would be able to insulate anybody from any kind of liability.
What does the statute actually read? Kind of just give me the highlight, Beth or somebody.
It's that, this follows pretty much how it goes. It does say you can't do business...
There's not one before or after, like in the Bible, that kind of changes the...
There are exceptions, and it lists out exceptions, and, you know, there are different things. And they say there's no intent to bar this, but I'm extremely conservative. I tell anybody that I talk to about ethics stuff, when it comes to ethics, I don't want anybody getting called to Tallahassee to stand before the Commission on Ethics, because once you get called, if you go to a new job and they Google your name, that's popping up. So, I mean, even if they're found not guilty of anything, if they Google your name in Florida, the first things that pop up is you got called before the Commission on Ethics.
Have we talked to somebody at the Commission on Ethics on this, like, get some kind of ruling from them?
Right now, I send, I can ask about, hey, is this situation? But they can't give you an exemption blanket. They would need specific, and I have, and I continue to send those to contacts that I have over there, like people I know.
I just, we have some really good businesses in town, and I know that their spouses or children work in the system, and so that's, I just, I want to be sure that everybody's aware of that, and that whatever we can do to...
Now, something went to the ethics board. We have a school board member that owned a door company.
Yeah, Steve Herring.
And he, they went to the ethics board about that. He was on the school board, but the corporation was, it was a corporation, and then he just didn't vote on the, he just drew and stood back and didn't vote. And he was deaf, that was real close to it, much more than a teacher close to an appraiser.
I believe that was a sole proprietor was the basis that they came back on. It was the only one that did that type of door or something. I think there was some...
It was a sealed bid.
Oh, a sealed bid, yeah. And that is another option, but our appraisers aren't usually chosen by sealed bid, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, they don't do sealed bids, so...
That, that's just one example, but I'm sure there are others that are, that are out there.
I think statute doesn't cover everything. Statute, they keep making laws every time a situation, okay, now we're going to have a, have to have a law in the legislature. If a teacher is one of the 7,000 employees, can her husband do business with the school system? Now, we have to have a new statute for that. I think there's some things that statute just flat doesn't cover, and that we just have to use common sense on. And I don't know how, what we can do. I don't want to get the school board attorney, the school board attorney cannot advise us to do this, but we can go against our school board attorney.
I can't insulate anybody, only the Commission on Ethics, and I, I do. Like, I have one right now, I'm waiting on a response that she said she'll get back to me probably by Friday on one where I've said, hey, this is my interpretation, do you agree or not, if it's questionable? And I wait for them to tell me. And no, they're pretty good about shooting me timely emails back saying, yeah, we think you're okay on that one.
Okay, let's, let's do the teacher one then, with the ethics. Let's do the teacher one and see...
Well, I mean, that was just...
That was just one.
I know, but I mean, let's, let's do it.
It's a good example.
I don't want our employees, because once...
Separation there needs to be for it to be ethical.
Right.
I mean, if they're in the department that's doing the appraisal work, you know, I can see how they'd have to step back and not be involved in that, but, because there could be a payoff type thing. I mean, you could envision that, but, or someone could, but not, I think statute just does not cover everything, and there comes a point where governments do have to look at the intent of the statute, and I don't believe the intent of the statute was to keep, if you got a school, if you got the largest business in the county, and you got someone working as a janitor, and their, their wife owns some kind of other company, or whatever even, or whatever, that they can't do business. I just don't think the statute, I don't think the intent of the law was that. So, maybe that's something that we need to get heavier on, having, having...
I'll ask them.
Some check with the ethics people.
Yeah, I just...
I'll pose it to the Commission on Ethics.
Okay, thanks.
So, are y'all comfortable with the changes that have been made with this?
Yes, with the caveat that we can come back to you.
Yes.
If we feel like we haven't done enough for our employees.
It's very reassuring to have all of you up here and, and hearing it from the horse's mouth, so to speak, because when I read an email that says that many concerns were noted, that, that is alarming. And when I think of bookkeepers at our schools, that's almost a misnomer. They are harshly audited.
Yes.
And so, yes. And you have to keep up with that. So, it, it means the world to have the folks that are doing the heavy lifting providing input.
But on the other hand, our school board attorney, our school board attorney has to give us worst-case scenario, what can happen.
Right.
And we have to get somewhere in between, because we can't expect him to be the sixth board member and be telling us things. He has to give us worst-case scenario on what we've got to do, and then we have to come somehow to the common sense level.
And we do appreciate Mr. Gibbs and Terry Brown meeting with us this morning, so we get, express our concerns and get some of the issues resolved. It was a very positive meeting, and we look forward to that continuing.
And I'm sure Terry and Mr. Gibbs didn't know about the $500 scorekeeper. I mean, you know, this is something we, so there's those kind of...
We just get the vendor app, and if it's not there, we say, oh, sorry, they didn't need this form, so...
And we get the backlash. We get the backlash, so we get the details.
Now you got a better threshold.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any public comment concerning proposed amended purchasing bidding policy 7.70, there being none, we're going forward. Forest High School generator update, Mr. Knight?
Morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Morning.
Dr. Mayor, this is Martinez Lopez, Mr. Gibbs. I just have a single sheet before you. It's large, 11 by 17, has a couple of columns on it, and previously, the board had heard a presentation by Duke Power, who is the school board's electric utility company for a number of different schools, present options for generators. So, what I'm bringing you today are those same options, plus a few additional options. And like I said, it's just a one-page deal. So, there are really four options we've identified here. Two are utilizing our electrical power utility, and the other two are the school system going at it alone. The two items, or the two options that Duke Power has identified is one called premier power, and the other is turnkey and maintenance. In the premier power situation, the power company would own the generator, and we would lease the generator from them. It would be for a period, all these are options expected to take place over 10 years, and the costs are figured for 10-year length. So, the way it would work is that we would have a generator, and, and the school that was selected is Forest High School, and that was to provide cooling capabilities at the school to enhance the use of that school as a special needs shelter. It's currently a general population shelter, as really all of our schools are, except Westport. That's the only officially designated special needs shelter. So, the power company would take over the responsibility of sizing the generator, designing it, installing it, having it manufactured. They would hire somebody to put it in, and they would, they would buy the generator from a generator manufacturer. And so, all the costs with that would be included, which would also cover monthly maintenance and a tri-annual maintenance. Every three quarters of a year, there are additional maintenance things that you would do to a generator this size. And so, it would be considered a turnkey package. It would be paid for from the school system in a monthly installment. That estimate from Duke was about $34,000 a month, so when you calculate it over 10 years' time, the estimate range they gave us for the overall cost was between $3,800,000 and $4,800,000. As far as what would happen if the generator failed, they have built into that cost, a, the cost of one time bringing in an emergency generator, what would happen there is similar to what we would do. If we have a failure of one of our generators, we have a standing contract, or at least an agreement with a provider of generators, that could bring one in in our name for so long as we needed it, till we got our own generator repaired. Power company would do something very similar. It'd just be a different-sized generator. And the timeframe for something like that taking place is about six months from time you size it and order it to installation. It takes about four months to manufacture something this size. The added two months would be installation and on the front end sizing the generator. And that, of course, would depend on the funding. Second option also going through the power company would be where the school board would own the generator, but we would go through the power company to get it. So, what we would do is basically use them as the broker. They would go secure a generator in our behalf, they would go ahead and have it installed, they would perform the maintenance by hiring somebody to maintain that generator for us. And that would require, however, an upfront cost of about $2.5 million, because that's what the power company has determined would be the cost of buying and installing a generator that size. And we're talking a sizable generator that's 2.5 megawatts, it's basically a small semi-trailer. And that overall cost in 10 years, again, including the maintenance and things they would do for us, would come to an estimated cost of $3,414,000 to $65,000 over that 10-year span. And again, it would take about six months to accomplish this. So, those are the two options going through the power company. The third option would be like we've done similar to eight, I think nine schools now, where we, whenever we built a new school, or in the case of, say, Fort McCoy School or Vanguard High School, when we did the renovation and upgraded the facilities there, we installed our own generator that the board owns, the board maintains, and the board takes care of. And so, with this-sized generator, it would be an upfront cost again of about a million and a half. That would cover the design, the manufacturing, the installation of it, and there is a little bit of money in there scattered over those 10 years for the various maintenance components. So, in 10 years, the overall cost would be about $1,648,000. And again, it would take about six months to accomplish this. So, these first three options are upfront costs, except for the first one would be a monthly cost, and it would require funds that are not yet identified. We don't have any other funds available earmarked for just generators. And that's what led us to the fourth option. When we looked, we stood back and looked at these three options, how we would pay for it. You really only have the capital projects fund, the general fund, which pays salaries and a number of other things, and then you have restricted funds. The restricted fund that we had looked at is the sales tax fund, but it's restricted in that we can only use it to build that fifth school that we never did build because we didn't have enough money to build it, or you can use that money for one of the four schools that were built under sales tax. Those schools were Legacy Elementary School, Marion Oaks Elementary School, Horizon Academy, and Liberty Middle School. And so, we looked a little closer at Liberty Middle School, and that is the fourth option. I'll tell you the difference. Liberty Middle School is already a shelter. It has a generator on site. Forest High, that generator is mobile. It's brought to the site on an as-needed basis. But Liberty Middle School is also right next door to Hamid Bowen Elementary School, and additionally, there's a bus compound between the two schools that not only has diesel fuel, but could be utilized by another agency, such as an emergency agency, to house special equipment if they needed to. And the big difference here, there are really two big differences. The first is that it's already a shelter, so you would be converting it to special needs rather than take a school that's not a shelter at all and trying to make a special needs shelter out of it. Now, Forest High is also a shelter, and so I have a few numbers I jotted down about the seats. The cost at doing Liberty Middle School would be equal to us going at it alone at Forest High School, about $1,648,000. It would take six months to do, just again, because you're really dependent upon the manufacturing time. But there is an identifiable fund source, because you have the sales tax money that can only be used for those four, including Liberty, and we would not have to go and look at general fund or capital as a way of having to cancel something to come up with those funds. So, as far as the big picture goes, that's how we got, we added, we decided to add this option just to paint the perspective to the board that it would mean a different school, but it does have a fund source that's identifiable versus the other options that do not currently. So, we would have to find that money with, from within, and then, of course, budget in the future. If we choose the monthly payment option, we would have to have that budgeted for out to 10 years in the general fund budget. So, that's the, the big picture as far as the options I have for you. Certainly happy to answer questions, or if there's any discussion and I can be of service, happy to do that. Sure.
What's the warranties on these?
Well, the warranty, the, the warranty from the Duke Power, and it would be the same if we bought it, would be whatever the manufacturer's warranty is, which is generally five years. You can buy an extended warranty for these genera, excuse me, these generators like you would a car, but they're not necessarily warranted the extent, for instance, if we went to the power company and had a 10-year agreement, wouldn't necessarily mean we have 10 years of warranty. It would depend on the more you pay, the longer your warranty is, but it's because the power company doesn't build it, we'd rely specifically on whatever the manufacturer's warranty is. And that would be the same if we bought it. So, there wouldn't be any difference in warranty if we choose one option over the other.
So, I have a question. Have you proposed this to Mr. Preston Bowlen at all about the Liberty? I mean, because that, that makes a lot of sense to me, to see if, if in the emergency management side, is that, would that work for a special needs shelter? I think we need that question.
Well, I did, I reached out to Preston yesterday, and I didn't speak until much later in the afternoon. He didn't oppose it. I believe he needs to do a couple of things, probably get some schematics and stuff, because we didn't know about this until yesterday. So, exactly, but he wasn't opposed. He said there was a couple of things he needed to check on before we agreed, but if this does work out, that's great in the sense that we have that money that is sitting there, and we can actually use it on this school. So, that would benefit them and us.
And the transportation hub being there, I mean, it makes a whole lot of sense.
They're far from Marion Hospital.
Right, so we do, we do have to follow up, you know, where he needs to follow up and get a couple of questions answered, but he was not opposed to it.
And might he also have funding, knowing the details of the project for, to be able to help us and, and make it even more cost-effective? My other question is, as far as Liberty is concerned, compared to Forest, how many special needs guests would we be? Would it be even up, or less, or what?
It, it's definitely not even, because Forest High has a bigger cafeteria, bigger gym being a high school, so that's where the difference is. But the numbers look like this. If you converted Forest High School from general population to special needs, you would wipe out all the general population seats, because they're calculated differently, and so you would lose, it's, it's well over 1,000 special, or general population seats, and you would gain 541 special needs seats at Forest High School. At Liberty Middle, you'd lose about 915 general population seats, but you would gain 305 special needs seats, or capacity for 305. So, it's a little over 200-seat difference between the two schools. And again, it's mostly because of the size of the school. Liberty's just a little smaller, being a middle school.
And he was going to check with the health department too. There was, I know you mentioned that.
So, we need to wait to hear from Preston.
Yeah, and he said it would take a couple of days, I believe, but...
Because I know we want to try to get this done before hurricane season.
And I'm still committed to meeting with the city and county. I've had a very brief conversation, but I think they're, they're willing to...
It's all, it's a community, this is a community issue.
Right, right. And, and I really would like to know if using Liberty and then also having Westport will provide the support for our special needs residents, enough, enough seats.
Because it's going to be a couple hundred difference, it seems like.
Right.
It, we did look at what the state says are needs, our, it's, it's actually published, it's Department of Burnt Sue Management Services that, that covers the whole state. And they had given in 2018, our outlook in terms of needs for special needs is 1,000 people, or 1,000 spaces. And with just Westport, we have 502 spaces currently, and if we follow through with the state's offer for some retrofits, we would pick up another 243 seats just at Westport.
Okay, and that would put us over the 1,000?
That would, well, that would put us at 745. That would leave a difference from that 1,000 as 255. So, if you pick up Forest High, you have a couple hundred over. If you pick up Liberty Middle, you have about 55 seats more than what our projected special needs are for the district.
And with the Duke, with the Duke options, the, we would never own those, we would never own those generators, correct?
That's correct. Uh, that's correct. The only opportunity to own them would be what they're calling the turnkey maintenance plan. So, what you're really doing is you're paying them $2.5 million to buy the generator in our behalf, but it would be installed on the power company's side of things. So, technically, we own it because we paid for it, but they're responsible for the maintenance. And so, it's sort of, I don't really how to, they said, well, we would own it, but I don't know that we would really own it in the sense that we couldn't do whatever we want to. We couldn't pick it up, move it somewhere else. It would be dedicated to that school under their responsibility for maintenance. And so, it's ownership, but not really. It's almost like paying a lease upfront is what it really is.
Let me ask one more question. What about that special utility rate we get at Forest? How's that going to affect? I mean, we lost that rate when we didn't use Bellevue. Is this going to affect by not using Forest? Are we going to still be able to keep the special utility rate?
Well, with the, the rate you're referring to, Mrs. Stacy, is it's an interruptible power rate. And so, if you, well, if you put a generator in, you have to use a tier four generator. It doesn't matter if we buy it or the power company. And what tier four means is it's similar to a car meeting California emission standards. It's a high grade of, of environmental emission standards versus a tier two generator which is a little, I don't want to say dirtier in terms of polluting, but it's not as restrictive on the environmental side. So, as long as we were using a tier four generator, they would be able to, they said we would stay on that rate if we had a generator in place. So, I don't think it would impact, at least our understanding is it wouldn't impact anything in place now because if we didn't choose Forest High School, it would stay as is. You know, we wouldn't be altering the power for it. It would stay on interruptible power so long as the board wanted to engage in interruptible power.
Could you double-check and make sure?
Yes.
Because we did lose that, I think, at Bellevue, didn't we? When we pulled the generator out, we, I think we went back on the old.
Yeah, Bellevue's was a little different scenario in that those agreements from years ago allowed the power company to put us using the generator if they so choose, so they would not have to buy power to supply it. Duke is its own power manufacturer. They have power plants, ECO doesn't. And I think that was the difference there is that they could afford to give us a cheaper rate if they didn't have to go buy power for us. And when we don't have a generator there, there's no option for the power company.
The only reason I'm saying that is because that guy kind of popped up with that in his conversation. Like, he kind of didn't know how we got it type. I mean, he had like, there was just something that I was a little.
Talking about the Forest High in the, in the presentation a week and a half ago.
Yeah, he just kind of popped up with that little comment. So, would you make sure we're A-OK on all that?
Yeah, and there are two different departments that, the interruptible power folks have to do with our regular billing and they have nothing to do with the, the general service side.
He didn't know kind of how we got it or something. I don't know.
Yeah, because they're two different entities.
Yeah.
Let's just make sure.
Yes, I will absolutely double-check. And if there's not an opportunity in a work session, I'll just email through the channels to.
That's fine. That's good anyway. I don't need to just.
We need to bring this back.
No.
To the board, very quickly.
Yeah.
Next work session.
So, Robert, my question would be, we have staff that's trained in the maintenance of these, of these generators, correct?
We, yes. The technical services department is the entity in the school system that's responsible for maintaining the generators. They go once a month and fire up the generators, run them, put a load on them so that they remain operable. Now, if we got a generator this size, we, we've looked at the options and the costs of hiring a company to do it and the cost amounts to about $14,000 annually.
Listen, 1.8 over 10 years?
Uh, well, it would be $140,000.
Over 10 years.
Uh, over 10 years. It's 14,000.
Total would be about 1.84. Just calculating it.
Oh, you mean the entire cost?
Entire total.
Yes, actually, we have $100,000 already in there for maintenance in that $1,648 figure. So, the overall cost, including maintenance, for us to do it would be about $1,648. And then, you see the cost there if the power company did it, their costs would vary from ours.
Okay, all right. I just have one last question. How important is the remote monitoring?
Well, the remote monitoring is because the power company would own it, they would be the ones remoting, monitoring on their own to look at the health of it. We don't have that provision on any other generator. It's really a matter of when we get the hurricane, close to hurricane season, automatically, our people will go out and ensure that A, they're fueled, B, that they are in compliance with their last known maintenance check. And if they're not, they're, they're run through the drills on making sure that generator is operable. I think the difference in remote is that by computer, you can look at these things because Duke is obviously a corporation that, that stretches beyond Marion County, whereas our people are in a truck and they drive around at just our schools with a generator. I don't know that it's critical. I mean, it's sort of like windshield wipers on your headlights of your car. It's probably doing some good. I'm not sure how much. This is really something unique to Duke because they probably monitor multiple generators from one site rather than sending somebody around in a truck. Our people are always in a truck checking on things on a routine basis. So, I'm not sure it's that critical.
Okay, I appreciate hearing that because obviously, failure is not an option.
Yes.
What about the location of Liberty, being so close to Westport? It was comforting to know that we had a special needs shelter on opposite sides of the county. So, has that been discussed, like keeping it at Forest, Forest and Westport?
Yes, I, well, because, one thought is because we tend to be the ones transporting those folks, it almost doesn't matter as heavily where the location is because we'll probably pick those folks up and drive them anyway to the special needs shelter. They're not necessarily getting there on their own. And what we understand is sometimes they bring family members with them and we don't want to use the seats at the special needs shelter. The advantage that Liberty would have over any other school that's just special needs is that they could camp out next door at Ham at Bowen and walk right next door to pick up their relatives and go back home.
Location is really, really.
And so, if you, if you wipe out all the general population seats at Westport or Forest, you don't really have that option. You kind of got to make provisions from them or they might be 20 miles away in another shelter.
And Dr. Mayor, that was my thought also was how it was going, you know, kind of read my mind or I read yours about how it's going to affect being spread out. So, thank you for that response because that was kind of on my head. I just forgot to ask the question.
Yeah, well, we're going to add the pets. Mr. Bowlen was looking into adding the pets to Westport too. So, that was.
So, we'd have Vanguard and Westport.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because, you know, the special needs folks, they have those pets and yeah, that's, yeah, you don't want to take them from them.
Some of them are service animals.
All right, so, we need to get this on the next work session. You got it?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just wait to hear what date that is, but in the meantime, prep for that whenever.
We just want to hear back from Preston.
Yeah, so, you'll work with Preston during this time to, for, take him out there and make sure that it's, that Liberty would work?
Yes, we've actually already walked Liberty Middle School. We've walked, I think we just about walked all of our shelters. At that time, it wasn't a high focus to convert it. It was, it was really a walkthrough just to understand what the school has. And the entire building, one except for the administration office, is a hardened shelter. So, the media center, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the band, vocal rooms, all those spaces at the front of the school are, are built as one building that are hardened. But we did walk it, but certainly we weren't talking about it specifically as a special needs shelter. We'll be happy to carry on that conversation. Bring it back to the board.
Hopefully, he'll have some pocket money too to throw at the project.
Yes, we'll, we'll shake him upside down, see what he's got.
Reese's smile there.
Yeah. We're thinking of you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any public comment concerning Forest High School generator update? Any public comment? Very good. Board concerns. Start with Mrs. Stacy.
I'll have a thing.
Ms. McCall?
I have nothing other than I'm headed to Connecticut on Friday to watch UMass play Virginia.
Undefeated.
UMass is undefeated, but Virginia, this is going to be the test.
I just have one thing I wanted to bring to the board. Jane Elsperman has a contract that legal has not just signed. And Paul Vlachin, I can't think of what it's called, what contract.
Mastery Connect.
Mastery Connect. Okay, so, he cannot approve it because this company extracts data, like birth dates and stuff, from our students. Yeah, and it's like a 23.
Yeah, we signed the, it's a data sharing agreement, but in their attachments, they swapped out a provision that says any conflicts, their contracts prevail over our terms. And I'd never approve those. So, I mean, if they have in there California law applies, it's a conflict with ours and we're litigating in California. So, I mean, I never approve those. If the board wants to prove it, approve it to go forward, that's fine. And so, I have not approved that.
So, so, tell me, yeah, what are the ramifications? If we, if we don't, is this, is this something she uses?
She wants to do, my understanding is it's a PD program that she needs to train her, the teachers there for whatever she's trying to do.
Is she paying for it?
It's a, we're a pass-through, yeah, but since they're using our data, we, we said we recommended going through a data share agreement so that we're best protected. And the vendor simply wants to be difficult on that one.
Is this the same situation as the Great Leaps contract? Because there were some birth dates associated with that, am I right?
I believe Great Leaps was, I don't, I don't remember having an issue, any issues with Great Leaps. I think they did a, a data share agreement.
So, that one's okay to move forward and we should be voting on it?
From my perspective, from legal side, we're done with it and it was approved. I don't know where it is outside of that.
They have it to sign. Ms. Elsperman's been waiting since July for this purchase.
We're going to what size purchases it is.
It's a 20,000?
Mm-hmm, it's under the threshold.
It's a pass-through.
We're a pass-through.
It's under the threshold. She needs it.
I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not opposed either. I'm not opposed at all.
You don't want to tie the hands of the ones that are doing the heavy lifting.
We're already paying a bunch of money to tie hands and the others over.
So, what's, again, what's the ramifications? What does it mean when they don't want to be, I mean, like, what can happen? Give us a.
Yeah, if they, like I said, if something happens and in their contract terms, say California applies and our, say Marion County is where you have to litigate, we're litigating in California because theirs do, so we have to pay those costs. If it says that we have to agree with any sharing to third parties for the data part of it and their contract says they get to decide who and when to share whatever data, their contract's going to apply and they get to give our data to whoever.
Why would they share data? I mean, who would?
Sometimes they have like subcontractors that they work with for analyzing stuff to provide feedback and they will do that. I don't know if that's what this company's doing. I'm just providing you an example of what could happen.
But I, I know we can't, we can get in big trouble with data sharing.
That's why I don't approve it when this comes.
I mean, they're.
It's your decision, so you guys can say, hey, we're okay with it.
I don't, I've.
Are other counties and states using this?
I haven't looked.
When she did her presentation, she actually, when you were vetting external operators, she actually mentioned this. And I, I find no justification for this to have been hung up since July. This is, this is serious.
But our question though is, are other districts using this?
That I don't know. All I know is she's the external operator. She asked for it in July. So, this should have been vetted a long time ago, but this, this puts us in a, in a, in a spot with, with her contract.
Okay, but.
This should have been vetted a long time ago.
So, we're good.
I think I'll just hang out on a limb like on this one. We can't be completely unanimous every time.
We're going to go ahead and do it.
Because I'm not real comfortable with data sharing. I don't want to get, I don't want to be on, I don't want to be a vote that gave.
We're not voting. He can sign it. It's just, I just didn't, I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention.
Right, and it brought to mine as well.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, anything else, Ms. King?
Oh, no, I don't have anything except for congratulations. Congratulations.
Wasn't the data sharing done though?
It is a data share. They changed, the, the problem is they made a change to, I believe, one of their documents to make their terms prevail over any conflicting district terms.
So, the data sharing is good, it's just the.
That applies to everything. So, any, any contract provision, their terms are going to apply because they added that in there. So, they've essentially nullified our contract terms where there's any kind of conflict. And I, I never approve those on any vendor, so I'll bring it to the board.
But the data sharing agreement was approved.
They, they did fill out a data sharing agreement and they've attached that provision to it. So, if their data share, if their documents say they get to share it with whoever they want and our data share says they need board approval to share that data, they get to share whatever they want.
All right. We, we have three. All right. All right. So, this, Thor?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And thank you to the rest of your board, or our board, for the, for the confidence that you've put in both of us to move the ship forward. And it's an honor and it continues to be a pleasure to serve on the Marion County School Board. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
I want to close out with the comments. I'm sorry, I didn't ask superintended. Does she have anything? Do you have anything? Dr. Mayor?
No, sir.
Apologize for that. I do want to say, thank you guys for the confidence, but I want to tell Ms. King, thank you for navigating us this first year. Ms. Thor and I, we've learned a lot and we're still learning and we've gotten some great help from Mrs. Stacy and Ms. McCall, so we have some other things to do. Also, I want to emphasize safety. Last week, we had three that, whose lives were touched at Bellevue. And then, just this weekend, we have another life that was touched at Sunrise Elementary. The person, the child that was deceased was a student of Sunrise. And the person that drove the car was a former student that went to high school, both our schools. So, we want to emphasize safety in school and out of school, in school and out of school.